Okay, this is the District 64, Park Ridge Niles, regular school board meeting. It's Thursday, April 21st, and we are going to start with an IASB workshop. That's the Illinois Association of School Boards. Let us first do a roll call.
All right, Sotos.
Here.
Waitovich is not present. Pearl?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Sellus?
Here.
Riles?
Here.
Lubinski? Present. Quormcarrys.
Gareth, were you able to hear Phyllis?
He said.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, a little fainter, but you're much stronger.
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk close. Can you hear me better like this?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, sounds good. All right, so we will get started. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick and Dee, and let's get rolling. We're going to be efficient with our time.
Do I need to sit in the microphone so he can hear me?
You're okay. You're fine. Yep.
Okay. So I'm Patrick Allen of the School Board Association. We are going to get through this quick. But if we could, just go around, let me know how long you've been on the school.
Last one, I started in 10. I got appointed to Phyllis's seat, but I did four years prior to this. I did four years in Kentucky, too.
Okay.
Just a little under a year.
Under a year, okay.
Ah, so this is my third year.
Third year, all right.
Same.
Seventh?
Too many to count.
Why don't we need it to be a first? Just gives me an idea of where everyone is at. So a couple of slides we'll run through, just as we get started. We have at the association what we call the foundational principles of effective governance. We like to think of that as a job description for a school board. So there's six of them. First one is the board clarifies the district purpose. Right, you guys?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you a second. I was, I was thinking for the public. You're saying for Garrett.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, so.
Because I texted him, I'm not, I would think, you know, you can hold, that one will move a little bit. There's some cord on there, so you can stand, Patrick.
Denise, I can hear you. I could hear, I could hear Tom respond. I think I heard Larry slightly, he was a lot quieter.
I think we just have to speak into our microphones. I always forget.
Phyllis, I could hear.
Okay.
Clearly, clearly. And Eric is faint as well.
Can you hear me now? There you go.
I'm sure you heard that. Okay. So the.
I can hear you loud and clear enough. Thank you.
So the foundational principles that we have, first one, the board clarifying the district purpose. You guys set the direction of the district. You're responsible for, you know, kind of setting the course for where the district is headed in the, in the future. The second one, and this one has become a lot more important over the last couple of years. The board has to connect with the community. That's a, really an ongoing two-way dialogue that the board needs to have in something more than just people coming in and yelling at you because you are making their kid wear a mask to school. It needs to be, needs to be a plan around that. The third one, the board employs a superintendent. That's the only employee that the school board has. Fourth one, the board's going to delegate authority to that superintendent to run the district as, as they see fit. The fifth one, the board has to monitor performance. So you have to, in number one, you're setting goals for the district. You're setting a direction. You have to kind of follow up and make sure that direction is, is being hit. If you're not monitoring that performance, you have no way of knowing if you're hitting the goals that you, that you need to. And the last one, number six, the board taking responsibility. That means as, not only as a board, but also as an individual board member, you're taking responsibility for yourself in ensuring that the, the contributions that you have as an individual, or that you are contributing as a, as an individual, and that as a board, what you're saying and the things that you are doing are coming across like you want them to, right? That you're having good communication with the superintendent. If, if there's, you know, wires getting crossed, that you're kind of stepping back, looking in the mirror, and making sure that you can correct that to get those taken care of. And again, that was quick. We have a whole class that we can go over with that. So in your folder, you'll see this, this slide that's up there. We always like to say that board work and superintendent work aren't done in, in silos. And as you'll clearly see on this slide, we drew it up as if they're in silos. So just ignore, ignore that part. So a board is responsible, the main role of a board is to, to determine who's going to get what and how much that's going to cost, right? So the board's really going to be up high, they're going to govern those things. The superintendent's responsible for determining how something is going to get done, when it's going to get done, where it's going to get done, and who's going to do it. So the superintendent's going to recommend a plan, board's going to discuss it, ultimately vote on that plan, and then the superintendent will be responsible for, for implementing that plan. I think a good example of the definition of board work and superintendent work, and this is something that has gotten fuzzy over the last couple of years. There's been a lot of gray area introduced to all this. But I think a good example is one that one of my colleagues uses, and it's making chocolate chip cookies. So the way that she makes chocolate chip cookies is kind of adds, you know, one ingredient at a time and really takes her time doing that. The way that her son makes chocolate chip cookies is he throws everything into the mixer, turns it on. Ultimately, when they come out of the oven, they taste exactly the same. They're the same ingredients, everything got done, you have chocolate chip cookies. So it's a board's responsibility to say to the superintendent, we want chocolate chip cookies. And then you let the superintendent go about doing it however you'd want to. He might do it in a way that you don't think is the best way, but it's his job to determine how that's going to, going to get done. The way that these two non-silos get, get connected are when there is trust and communication between not only the board and the superintendent, but also the individual board members. Everyone has to be able to, to work together for all of this to, to function properly. If you don't have good trust and good communication, especially between the board and the superintendent, it makes things a lot more challenging. If everything that's being done is, now, it's, it's perfectly fine for a board to question things, but when you start getting down into the, the weeds on some of those questions, it gets a lot more difficult for the superintendent. I like to say the superintendent already has a 40-hour-a-week job, right? He's got to, he's got to manage the district. That's a pretty big, that's a pretty big job. When, a lot of times when boards are asking for a lot of this extra information, it becomes a 60-hour-a-week job or an 80-hour-a-week job. So you've just got to be careful about how you're, you're using the superintendent like that. So the, the role of the board is to govern the school district. That's a, you know, you heard govern. We have the foundational principles of effective governance, and now here, the role of the board is to, to govern the district. Ultimately, the board is going to identify the intended results. That's what you're, you're looking for. You're saying, this is what we want, and then you step back and let the superintendent figure that out. So the role of the superintendent is to manage the district, right? He's going to fill in the details of how it's going to get done, when it's going to get done, where it's going to get done, and who's going to do it. And ultimately, he's going to lead the staff to improve overall district performance and make sure that everything that's being done within the district is being done in compliance with the policy, the board policy that you guys are responsible for. So now we're going to, we'll jump in and use the, the clickers that you guys have in front of you there. We've got a, some questions that we're going to go over. You guys will be able to, to answer. We'll see what the, the results are. We have no way of, of tracking these answers, so you guys can, can answer whatever you want, be as, as truthful as you, as you want to. This goes a long way in, in really clarifying the, the roles and responsibilities between the, the board and the superintendent, but also the communication between individual board members. You guys are able to learn more about each other going through this. There are no right or wrong answers to these questions. If there were, it would make our jobs a lot easier, but there are no right or wrong answers for how you govern a school district, right? There's, there's no rules for that. You guys kind of have to figure out what works best for, for your district. So, have you guys ever heard of the balcony perspective? Right, so that's, I think that's a, there's a number of different things that are, that are like this, but it's important. And one thing that my, the guy I replaced, one thing I picked up from him was that governance isn't something that comes natural to most people. It's going to be a, it's not, it's not easy to stand up on the balcony, see a problem in a corner, and just stand there and watch it, right? Knowing that there's someone else who's going to take care of that. Whether it's the superintendent, whether it's a principal, whether it's a teacher, someone else is responsible for that. You have to have the trust in the rest of the district to go handle that. But that's not easy, because as humans, we want to help in those situations. We want to walk down those stairs and go help. But as a board, that's not the effective thing to do. You have to stand up there and let the, the people who are trained to do that go ahead and do that. So like I said, there's no right or wrong answers when we go through here. We're not going to judge you. Dee and I aren't going to walk outside after this and say, man, I can't believe their, their answer to number three.
So we just push the button, these are already functioning, right?
Yep. Well, we're going to have a question to, to check and make sure they're functioning. I certainly hope they, they were this afternoon, so we'll, we'll see. There is going to be, after we go through the, the process of everyone answering, there is going to be, you'll see a best practice answer that we've kind of come up with around the office. But again, that's the, the perfect world answer. That doesn't mean that that's something that's going to work for, for your, your district. So it's not important to be correct. It's not important to get the right answer, to get the best practice answer. I didn't bring any awards with me to give anything out if you get the most correct answer, so the, the important thing is that you guys have dialogue around why you answered what you did and come to a better understanding. There's a, a yellow sheet of paper in there that'll describe, there's six different answers that you'll be able to have. For these, they're going to stay the same throughout. The first three are the superintendent, one being a routine decision, one being informing the board after a decision is made, and the third being getting the board's thinking before making a decision. The last three are the school board. First one, respecting the decision of the superintendent, making it official. The next one being striving for consensus with the, the board and superintendent team. And the last one, where the board may expect a recommendation from the, from the superintendent. There is going to be some vagueness, and you can see that some of these answers are going to kind of run together, and there's going to be some vagueness in some of the questions. So if you don't like vagueness, I apologize in advance, but nothing, nothing we can do about that. So let's see if they're, if they're working here. So how's everyone feeling today? You can answer as many times as you want to, as long as, on the screen there, that's green, that polling is open. So you hit whatever, whatever number you want to. If you decide to change an answer, you can change it as long as that's still green. So six, is that right? Okay. And if I ask if someone is still thinking, I'm not telling you to go faster, but sometimes these things get, get lost. So I would have thought more people would be ready for summer. I certainly am. So let's get to the, let's get to the heart of it. Decide how money budgeted is allocated for items to be purchased. Whose decision is that? Yeah, six, okay. All right, so two-thirds of you think that it's the, the school board's decision, and one-third of you think that it's the school board and superintendent team striving for consensus. So why do you think the best practice answer is that it would be the superintendent who's informing the board?
Well, I, I think I made a mistake because I didn't really understand or comprehend the word money that's already been budgeted. If it was new money, then my answer would have been, but because.
Do you want to go to the mic, just for Gareth? Thank you, Tom.
Because it was money that was already budgeted, I would have not answered five. I would have answered three.
Can you go back a slide? I just want to look at the question again.
Well, it's still up at the, it's still up at the top. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's right up there. Because in this case, the board has already voted on that. You guys have already made that determination. You've already said, this is the budget that we approve. You know, maybe you put $20,000 into classroom supplies, for example. Do you guys really care how that $20,000 is spent?
We care, but we trust the fact that the superintendent we hired will do it the right way. And if he doesn't, then the next time, we would, at least I would then bring it up and say, hey, you know what? That last time, I think you kind of screwed the, but that's why I wanted to change my answer.
It's a number two, right? Yeah.
The policy of purchasing and all that other stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. But this, this is more kind of focused on, you know, you guys have already said that money's going to be spent. You guys have already approved all of that. You don't need to be down in the weeds of, now, wait a second, you bought $5,000 worth of number-two pencils. Could you have bought $4,000 worth of these pencils, right? That's not something that a board should ever be involved in. You, like you said, you trust the superintendent to go out and, and do that.
For example, we're doing a curriculum purchase. You know, it's in the budget, but you still are approving it, and that's an item to be purchased.
That's why I'm saying.
Well, and that's what, but Tom, I heard you.
We're both attorneys, I think we're both going to overanalyze every question you have.
No, but then I heard you say, well, if, you know, Eric doesn't do it right. Like, I go back to the cookie example. Like, if Eric put all the ingredients in, and you would have been like, oh, maybe you should have done the sugar and butter first, but you still, you know, I don't know, so I wonder about that.
Well, not doing it right doesn't mean that they intentionally did it wrong. Could have just missed something, or, you know, we've had situations where we tried to do it right, and it just didn't happen.
Well, and I would think.
That's why, that's why, for the most part, I'm 100% in agreement that it should be the superintendent making those decisions. And for 90% of budgeted items, it should be number two. But there is a small percentage of stuff that would be a large, even though the money was budgeted for it, it's a larger purchase, and that's why I'm like three. Because I'd like, I'd like a, hey, by the way, I'm about to spend a million of that budgeted money on this. Anyone have any thoughts on that? But I still think it's the superintendent's decision.
Yeah, and there's the, what is it, $25,000? Anytime you spend that, it has to be approved by the board anyway. So there's always going to be things like that. But I would also assume that anytime, and I met Eric 30 minutes ago, but I would assume that anytime he's going through a budget, he's also looking for, is there ways I could have done that better? Right, that's, people that are, our good leaders are always doing that, right? That's, that's kind of a consistent thing that, that we'll see. Any other questions about this one? All right. Determine curriculum content.
If you would have asked me this five years ago, my answer would have been way different. So just promising.
He'll have four more premises.
All right, there's six. It's a little more of the goalposts that we see on, on some of these, so a little, a little all over the board. So Tom, you said your answer would have been different. You want to walk me through that?
My answer would have been three.
Okay.
But it was five on this one. And only because curriculum right now is such a hot topic. There's so many different things about curriculum that affect many different people in our district. I want to make sure that we really got it right, and as the board, we have an obligation to make sure that that portion of it does get right. In a typical situation, I think five years ago, it would have been, my, my thinking would have been the superintendent can handle that all on his own. This time, I know he can handle it on his own, but I think the board would need to give him some cover, and I think it's more of a team effort at that point, because it would potentially be a very non-popular decision one way or the other.
So let's just make sure we're all speaking in our mics, just to include Garrett. All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
So the question that I would have, you're a lawyer, is that correct? So what's your background with curriculum?
Oh, no, I don't have background with curriculum.
So that, that's where.
But I do have background in, in certain rights and certain people's, you know, so that's where that crossover is.
I understand where you're coming from with all that, right? You want to make sure that things are being done correctly. That's why you hire the right person to do it, right? Because there's a lot of times that you want to be involved. You want to make sure the right things are being done, and that's where you kind of provide your input and say, this is how I would like things to be done, and then he's going to go make those cookies, right? And if he's making cookies in a way that you guys don't like, and you say, we want chocolate chip, and he comes back and gives you oatmeal raisin, right? Worst cookies in the world, right? Then you have a discussion, you have a decision that you need to make. But it's important for a board to provide that input, but then to let him go out and do what he needs to do.
How does the board provide that input if we were to choose one or two? Because I look at two as, I did it, this is what I did. Too late to give input at that point. So if the right answer is one or two, how does the board provide that input?
If you have a good superintendent in place, right? They're going to know that some things a board isn't going to care about, right? There's going to be, if he comes up with a new curriculum for first grade in math, you guys probably don't care about that. You'd never have any idea, right? There's some curriculum that's going to be a little more, I think you said hot topic earlier, right? He's going to know that. He knows what the hot topic things are. He's going to discuss things with the board. Hey, here's what I'm thinking of doing. You know, you guys can, can provide input, do whatever, but ultimately, it's going to be his decision of what that, what that curriculum comes from.
So should I just assume from now on that these questions are for 90% of what we deal with and not 100% of what we deal with?
There's always going to be exceptions to, to everything, right? But, but I think that.
Because you explained it perfectly. Typically, I, typically, I care what the curriculum is in second grade, but I don't care to give my input, because like you said, I wouldn't be able to even begin to, you know, give my opinion as to what's right or what's wrong as a second-grade math curriculum. So yes, I would.
And he's going to know, maybe, maybe this school is known for their second-grade math curriculum, right? Maybe that's how you guys are known throughout the city. But if, if he comes in and makes a change to that, right? I'm going to guess that he's going to say, wait a second, this is huge. This is like the thing our district's known for. I'm going to talk to the board before I make that change. Just like if it's a hot topic curriculum, or whatever it might be.
Like sex ed coming up, right? The, the policy and, yeah. Like, that's a hot topic one, where I can see your perspective, Tom.
I, I can't imagine, and again, I met Eric 33 minutes ago now. I can't imagine that he's going to make a decision on something like that without any input, just behind a closed door and say, hey, here it is, this is what we're rolling with. So in that case, you mentioned providing cover for the superintendent, which I think is, is very important. I think we've seen that through COVID, that was very important, to say, hey, he's not making this decision, right? This is, there's eight of us, we're all together on this, or, you know, you're going to have to come through us if you want to, want to go through him. So it, it is important for a board to, to kind of have cover there, but ultimately, he needs to be the one to, to make that decision.
And then my attorney comment was only for your questions tonight. It wasn't, you know, for the board, we're saying that just because we're attorneys, we know better. That's, you know.
No, no, and I wasn't, no. Well, a good example, I worked with a board before, and there was a guy, he was a, a project manager for a construction company. And every day, he would drive by their grade school, and they were putting an addition on. And he'd get out of his car, and he'd walk through the building, and he'd look at all this stuff, and he'd send a list of questions to the superintendent every night. And the superintendent is already getting a list of questions from the contractor and all this stuff. And this guy didn't see what he was doing wrong. And I said, well, what's, when you're sitting at this table, what's your job? And he said, well, I'm a, I'm a project manager for a construction company. And I said, no, you're a board member, right? And you have to, like, each of you has expertise that you can bring to the board, but ultimately, you have to remember that you are a board member. You're not kind of what you are outside of, of here, which can be difficult, right? But that's where you're going to see that, you know, as, as an attorney, maybe, maybe you're excellent in the policy area, right? That's something that you can, you know, that's where you can, can really dive in. But you have to be careful not to kind of mix the two and think, oh, I've got this expertise. Well, he's got the expertise. You guys hired him because he has that expertise. You need to let him be the, be the expert there.
I have faith that the superintendent has put a great team together. So I have faith in the team. And when he speaks, he's speaking for the team. I know the curriculum correctly. I've got faith in her. He's got faith in her. He brings that faith here. He'll ask us our opinion, but I have faith in his team.
And that's the way it should be, right? That's going to lead to the board being a lot more effective when everyone does trust each other for those things. Especially when something like COVID happens, or, I mean, that, seriously, that, that was such a huge trust thing. If you guys didn't have trust in each other through that, that would have been a lot more difficult to, to deal with. We'll jump to the, the next question here. Make changes in school programs.
What are school programs?
I had the same exact question.
Remember, remember going back to the, the vagueness that I talked about?
Are you talking like school programs, athletics, and that kind of stuff? Or are you talking about something a little more, you know, substantial? Like, like.
I mean, it could be special ed programs.
Like special ed programs. So, because I have a different answer for special ed programs, I have a different answer for what we're doing in volleyball or dodgeball.
Could be any of that. You hate that, don't you? Sorry. And what are changes? I mean.
Right, so following off of Tom's question, we don't know if it's a routine decision or not, so. It's routine decision is number one, so I don't know.
That's funny.
Is there an abstain button?
That's same here.
I, I pressed mine, but that's.
Overruled.
Are you still thinking on this one?
Oh, I'm not answering, just because, you know, we don't know if it's a routine decision or if it's, so I can't answer. Sorry.
So it's fine, we can, we can go. So the, the best practice answer is number two. Now, it, again, it does, it kind of, I'll say it, it, it kind of matters what the change is and what the program is, but ultimately, that's going to be the responsibility of the superintendent.
Well, on the board, there was an issue involving a very specific SPED issue that, you know, probably the board should have been involved, well, definitely the board should have been involved in, and it didn't happen, so it happened the way number two did, but even our attorneys disagreed that that.
And the fact that you brought that up is great, because I changed. I changed my answer from three to two specifically because of that. Typically, that would be the superintendent, his job, you do it, you know, maybe let us know, hey, this is what I, I'm doing, or we're, you know, we're aware of how the special education, for example, is going. If we as a board hear from the public that they don't like the way special ed is going, I consider that different than the actual question you asked. I consider that, okay, now we have been informed that there's an issue, we bring that up as a different topic and say, hey, we know that there's an issue now with special ed, let's see how we can attack that. I didn't put that in that same category as a question. On a day-to-day, year-to-year basis, if things are going smoothly and we haven't been informed of a problem, then I believe it should be the superintendent who should handle, you know, those programs. If we are, are told that there's a problem with a program, then the board, I believe, at that point, needs to jump in, you know, headfirst and be like, hey. But I also think it's the superintendent's job to let us know that there's a problem with the program before we hear it from the public.
Yeah.
Or if you hear, sorry to cut you off, if you hear it from the public, I think then we have to ask Eric, because it could have been that the, you know, public says what happened, and then the teacher perspective is very different, you know? And so, is that public really true? You know, I mean, you have to really look at perspective.
But then, they don't know what they don't know, because, yes, what if there were legal violations and just nobody knows because they didn't look into it, you know?
I think it's important to pass on that information that you get when you hear something. You know, you hear that this parent didn't like the way that this was handled, right? I think it's important to pass that on to the superintendent, you don't want to keep that to yourself, you want to make sure that he's got that information, and he's going to get that to the person that can look into it and can see what's going on.
Unfortunately, it's not, this specific question's a little tough for this board and had nothing to do with this superintendent, and really probably didn't have anything to do with the prior one either, maybe, maybe not. But we had a situation where there was an issue with one of our programs, and it turns out that there was a lot of complaint about it to the appropriate people, and it turns out that not many things were being done about it, and the board had to intervene and had to step in and had to...
They became the engineers of that train.
Right. And so, that's why this question's a little tough, because this district has had to jump into a couple of programs that other people didn't handle the right way.
We actually made the...
This was prior to the superintendent, though, let's make that clear.
Well, and that was going to be my thing, is that the person that had the issues isn't sitting there.
No, he's not.
Right? You trust this guy, he's sitting there. As difficult as that is, you kind of have to say, he's got it.
But I trusted the prior one.
So, I know, you trust them until you don't, right? That's the, but if he hasn't shown any issues with that, if he's been good about, you know, addressing those things, doing what needs to be done, it's real difficult for a board to step in and start investigating things like that, right? You really have to make sure that the right people know about it, and, you know, you can ask for a, hey, here's this information, can you come back to us in a month and tell us what you found, right? We want to be able to go back to whoever it is and talk to them. That's perfectly fine. I just think when you start getting your hands dirty in those situations, like you said, right, we're the engineers, right? That's a difficult thing to get into. That's something where a board can't, you know...
That was the one program. The rest of the programs, we didn't get that involved, but that one SED program, we got waist-deep.
And in Larry's defense, we didn't want to be the engineers. Larry didn't want to be the engineer, none, no one wanted to be, we were thrown into it because of...
There were some motions that had to be made, and we made them.
Hey, Larry, just make sure you're speaking in your mic, I just want to make sure Gareth is, sorry about that, is, can't hear us.
I appreciate that, Larry's in and out.
I think it's important, this is kind of connected to all this, I think it's important for boards to be comfortable enough with each other to be able to say to someone, I think we're getting too far in the weeds on this, or for you to be able to go to Denise to say, hey, I think you're too far in the weeds when we're talking about this curriculum or whatever it is. And I think that it's important for individual board members to kind of have a way that you're comfortable being contacted, right? Some people, if I do something wrong, I tell my wife all the time, just call me out, I don't care where we are, if I do something wrong, just tell me, I just want to know, right? My wife doesn't, if I called her out in public on something, probably wouldn't have a wife anymore, right? We've got a whole thing that we've got to go through before I can really tell her what's going on. I think it's important for board members to understand each other and to know how you can get a hold of somebody. Maybe somebody wants to be called out, maybe somebody wants an email, maybe somebody wants to be pulled aside, but I think it's important that everybody know how you can go talk to somebody else if they're kind of getting too far into something, so that you can kind of pull back out from that.
And just so you know, I voted three the last two times, and, you know, the reason is, I always want to listen to the board if you have thoughts and opinions and ideas about this. And then, secondly, there should be other people involved. I shouldn't be making a decision, staff should be involved and so forth, because if the staff were concerned, they'd let the board know, and they should, you know? So, I think knowing our community, I'm going to lean more towards these numbers than just making decisions at least at this time.
I'm going to guess that you make changes to school programs every day that the board never hears about, right? Because they're things that you guys don't want to hear about, you never want to, right? We'll go back to second grade math curriculum, you don't care if they changed this to this, right? That's not important. And he's going to know if a program is important enough to the district, maybe I'm going to get the board's opinion, or this is going to be a hot topic, I need to do that, he's going to have that indication that he needs to come back to the board and kind of let everybody know what's going on with that. Any other thoughts on this one? All right. Determine raise increase for non-certified staff.
Is the money for the increase already in the budget? Or does the superintendent need more money?
I'm sorry, I can't answer questions after, it's already been... What thoughts do you guys have on this one?
Oh, I voted number four, he can do it. I think we did, I think we did that. He reviews them, he works with them on a daily basis, so.
Yeah.
So, just taking the recommendation.
Yeah.
And that's the best practice answer is number four. Anytime there's, you know, money that's going to be expended, the board ultimately has to approve that, but the superintendent should really be the one that's in charge of putting that together.
I went with number one.
This is the number one.
I picked one, so run with it.
This is fascinating that you went with number one.
When it comes to raises, if it's not the negotiation with the...
Unions?
With the unions, when it comes to the raises of, you know, a staffer, as long as it's within our budget, I don't know if that person deserves a raise or not. I mean, I probably don't even know who that person is, let alone the job they do, so I almost don't really want to be involved in it.
And honestly, it doesn't even matter if you know them or if they're doing a good job, right? That's not something that the board should ever, when it comes to performance-related things, whether it's, you know, hey, Dee's doing a great job as a principal, we should give her a huge raise, right? That's not something that the board should be involved in, that is going to be under his jurisdiction. The board has to vote on it, the board has to approve it, but you guys should be taking, you know, his word and going with it. Any other thoughts on that one?
I just looked at our policy 220, and generally, it says that we make employment decisions, so that's really vague in general, but I, you know, but I did also choose four.
Well, you guys, like, I don't know what your current procedures are for, like, hiring someone or that, you guys have to approve all of those. Ultimately, those are, that's your final decision.
Well, our district added something to our vote where we aren't actually, because we don't know, we're not involved in the interview process, we're...
Shouldn't be.
So, we basically just say, what was it, what did we add in there that says that we're taking...
You don't know, you're not doing it with personal knowledge.
We're not personally hiring them, we're taking the recommendation of the superintendent, and we're voting on his recommendation alone.
Without any knowledge.
Right, without any knowledge, so we added that in there. And then, when it comes to raises, I think, last time, we gave you a certain budget, and we said, here, give it to who you think needs it. So, that's kind of how I came up with my one, we already approved the money, now we're just, now we don't care if it all goes to one person or if it gets split up, you know, you decide who deserves it.
Yep.
I was thinking more of the lunchroom supervisors this year, you know, Eric, and I think Joel made a recommendation, here's what we think should be the recommendation, and we approved it. I think there was some conversation on how the raise should be made and should it, you know, but I think it's best just to trust the recommendation, just my perspective.
I think there's also been in the past, discussion of equity and things like that as well, that kind of seems not like picking on an individual, but kind of thinking about things for a principle, level of principles that we would like to see as well, so it's not just, not talking about specific individuals.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Gareth.
Next question, adopt district's annual budget.
Just going to guess C. I'm just kidding. I'm taking an ACT.
I have a two-year-old at home, and I always hold her in my left arm, and so, it's kind of helped me hold this microphone a little easier, so. All right, so ultimately, what's the key word in that?
Adopt.
Adopt, right? So, that's what a board does, is adopt something. So, anytime you look at the budget, right, the board is going to be the one to say, yes, this is the budget. Now, none of that, this is where these questions kind of, the answers kind of mingle together because you're not doing that completely separate from what the superintendent is doing, right? That's all done as a, you know, kind of as a team, but ultimately, the board is the one that says, yes, we are going to expend the money like this, this is our budget for the next year.
Yeah, so, if that wasn't there and it was create or discuss or whatever, then my answer would have been different, but when I read that word, adopt, I'm like six.
Yep. Propose standards for evaluating progress towards achieving performance goals.
Whose performance goal?
Exactly, that was my question, I just shut my mouth, though.
Whose performance goal? The superintendent's performance goals, the district's performance goals?
So, I usually don't answer questions, but I'll answer this one, we'll leave the superintendent out of this.
Okay.
We're all over the place.
Oh, come on.
What do you think on this one, Phyllis?
I said three.
Which was, listen to the board.
I was struggling between two and three, and I just defaulted to three. You know, that's the answer, that you just fill in.
I just searched goals in our policy manual, but I'll fill you in after.
So, why would this be something that the superintendent would do? There's a couple of reasons in there, but...
For me, our job is to evaluate the superintendent, and then it kind of stops there. We don't evaluate people beyond the superintendent. So, once I saw evaluate and you clarified that it has nothing to do with the superintendent, I stopped, I was done. But I always kind of liked to be informed, so three was the best answer for me.
I'm going to jump to the next one real quick. Adopt standards for evaluating progress towards achieving performance goals. Whose responsibility would that be? Propose.
Propose, yes.
What does a board ever propose? Nothing. Boards don't propose anything, you guys, you adopt things, right? The superintendent's going to propose things. If we go back to that silo chart that you guys have there, the superintendent's going to recommend something, the board's going to vote on it, superintendent's going to implement it. So, the board isn't proposing, you might have a discussion around what the superintendent proposes, but you guys are proposing things, you are adopting things. So, the superintendent's going to propose these standards. Now, again, this is the kind of thing that, there's going to be a discussion about this, I'm sure this isn't...
Can you go back to the slide you're talking about?
Yeah. It's the same wording, just adopt and propose are different.
Because were you connecting a policy, Carol?
Oh, no.
No, I thought you said you were searching goals.
Oh, I searched the word goals, and as Larry remembers from that long oath that he just took, part of it is that we have to formulate goals.
That's, now, I say this as someone who's a very goal-driven person, right? I've got a whiteboard at home, and I tell my wife, like, put on there what you want. Like, I want to know, on Saturday morning, when I wake up, I want to go there and say, cool, I'm going to do two and five today, or whatever. So, I'm a very goal-driven person. I think, especially after everything we've gone through with COVID, and, you know, it used to be, I'm guessing, nobody ever sat out here for your board meetings, right? You guys might have sat in silence, maybe you did have people show up. Now, you really have people show up, and they're loud. I think if a board sits down and starts to develop goals, I think it's a good opportunity to kind of connect back with the community, to kind of step away and say, hey, we're done with that part, now we're moving forward, and this is where we're headed. So, you know, you said in the policy manual, it says to formulate goals, right? I think that's very important for a board to be able to do. It gets a board away from being reactive to things, which a board shouldn't be, shouldn't have to be reactive, you guys should be very proactive. So, putting those goals together, you become more proactive, you know what you're going to talk about on a monthly basis because you've laid out these goals, you know that Eric's going to update you quarterly on this goal, and twice a year on this goal, and monthly on this goal. You know the things that are going to be there, you know what's going to be there, rather than coming in and sitting down and saying, what are we talking about this month? Right? You kind of, you can lay that out, you can understand what's going to, what's going to be on there. You're always going to have the things that are going to happen in the month that he's going to bring up to you guys that you're going to have discussion about, but it goes a long way in kind of laying out what the board can do going forward. So, again, that's from somebody who's very goal-driven, but I think it's important for boards to sit down and put goals together. If you bring in members of the community, kind of ask for their input, like I said, I think it just goes a long way in kind of letting everybody see that we're in this together. We might have had some issues, we might have been yelled at a few times, but we're all in this together, we all want the same thing, let's keep moving forward.
They're very good at finding us.
Yeah.
We don't have to solicit any.
No.
And our seats have been full way prior to COVID. I've rarely sat in a room for seven years.
You guys are lucky then.
And it's about 6:55, so we probably need to wrap up, Patrick. I know it's a little short, but thank you.
Nope, we're good.
We could come back to it, Tom.
We got a bunch more.
Yeah.
I want to pick up these clickers.
Okay.
Oh, that's it, we're done?
Well, you know what, so, we had, you know, about 50, 55 minutes today, probably when we got started, but I think the whole purpose was just to look at this continuum of board and superintendent and kind of what our role is in different decisions, and as Patrick said, it was the conversation, not the answer, you know? How do we kind of continue to think about this and continue to work together as a board along with Eric? Yeah, any last final thoughts, Patrick D.?
No, thank you for allowing Patrick and I to come in tonight, and Patrick, I got to let you know that his mom attended Lincoln right over here.
Wow. Okay, all right, thanks for your time today, we really appreciate it. Okay, have a nice weekend.
Okay, why don't we take a quick stretch?
All right, Gareth, we'll take a few minutes, and we'll start right at seven, okay? Alright Gareth, we'll take a few minutes and we'll start right at seven, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hi there and welcome to the District 64 Park Ridge Niles School Board Meeting. This is our regular board meeting, today's Thursday, April 21st. Uh, the board had convened at six o'clock and the Illinois Association of School Boards, uh, we had some training with them. Our training was on decision-making, kind of in the paradigm of continuous improvement. So how do we improve as a board and working with the administration? Uh, so why don't we stand, um, for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Larry, can you lead us?
Before I, before I start to pledge, I wanna say something. We lost a, a valued community member in Park Ridge, Judy Barclay, passed away and she was on a dozen different committees with me, so I'll say this pledge to honor Judy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, as far as my opening remarks, I don't have many remarks, it's great to see lots of young, talented individuals, uh, here with us today. And I just wanted to remind the board, it's April and, um, might not feel like April, well, today it does, but, um, uh, those of you who are newly elected, that's Gareth and Nikki and Phyllis, it's been a year since you've been on the board, so happy anniversary and, um, here we're a year together and welcome to Larry, who just came in with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, there you go. Alright, so now we are on to a fun part of the meeting and so we're gonna do student and staff recognitions. Eric?
Thank you. Uh, we have two great groups that we wanna recognize tonight. Um, the first is our maintenance staff and custodians and I'll turn it over to Tony Brusani, our Director of Facility Management.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. I think this has been one of those winters where it's, it's always challenging, right? You get the ice, you get the snow, you get the rain, we hit a little bit of everything. Uh, I hadn't been here the first year, I think, uh, our crew is one of the best I've had out of the 10 years I've been in education. I'll tell you what, these guys really went beyond and above at the building level as well as the district maintenance team, so personally, I'd like to congratulate them and thank them and thank Noel Mendoza, who's the Assistant Director, for making sure that the snow detail went without a hitch. I think we all had great success and we had a very good safety record to boot on that, so compliments to all of them.
Thank you.
I saw one of them's retiring and I'm voting no on his retirement.
They can't leave if we don't let them, right?
And Tony, I wanna thank you as well. I mean, Tony himself has dealt with the snow and the ice, I have seen him in front of the district building and so really appreciate that. And not just the winter, I think our maintenance staff and custodians really throughout COVID, there's a lot of extra details and duties, so really appreciate the efforts. Okay, alright, so now we'll go to recognizing our students.
Yes, so we're very excited to, uh, recognize our young authors tonight and I'm going to introduce one of our curriculum specialists, Megan Kiefer.
Okay, well, um, as Eric said, I'm Megan Kiefer, I'm the curriculum specialist for English and English Arts and I also have the privilege of helping organize the Young Author Contest in District 64. So each year we invite students in kindergarten through eighth grade to submit a young author story to their building coordinator. This year we had 418 writers submit stories, so that was something really wonderful to see, especially after last year we had a little bit of a dip, so this more than doubled our participation. Um, manuscripts can be up to 20 pages long and should be an original fiction story. Students can also choose to collaborate with one other author or illustrator at their grade level. Um, once submitted at the building level, the coordinators each select one winner per grade level to send on to the district contest. From there, um, we read and, uh, all the kindergarten manuscripts together and then all the first grade manuscripts together and one manuscript per grade level is selected to receive the award from the district, from District 64. So to say these young writers are talented is truly an understatement. Every year I think I say, we are gonna see these, these manuscripts published someday and we can say we knew them when. Um, I'm positive that we have future professional writers this year as we do every year. The character development, the setting description and the plot struggles truly come alive through these students' masterful craft of writing. They were invited here today and I think all but one were able to make it, so, um, we'll invite them each up one at a time to be recognized for this huge accomplishment. Alright, starting with our youngest writers, and we, once in a while we have a tie and this was one at kindergarten, we could not, we had many layers of readers and we just could not pick one winner, so we actually have two kindergarten winners tonight. Um, the first is Valerie Haza, who wrote The Lesson the Trees Taught from Carpenter School. Our second kindergartner was Sydney Coogan from Field School, who wrote The Bunmaid Saved the Treasure. Alright, our first grade writer is Eric Applabonip from Bear, who wrote Bear Who Cares from Roosevelt School. And I apologize, I may not have said his name the right way. Is Eric here? Our second grade writer came from Washington School, actually, this is a co-authorship. We have Maggie Kolaki and Izzy Matza for their manuscript, The Animal Games. Alright, in third grade, we have another co-authorship, um, with Olivia Madura and Alona Vergilio, um, with their manuscript, The Magic Journey from Franklin School. Alright, moving on, in fourth grade, um, from Roosevelt School, we have Safina Ali, who wrote a story called Do Over. Alright, and in fifth grade, again, a co-authorship, we have Jenna Nadowski and Vivian Romanelli, called The Seeker from Field School. Alright, moving on to sixth grade, we have Frances Ford from Emerson School, who wrote a tale called The Ballad of Ismelda. In seventh grade, we have Joseph Wolf, who wrote Flames, also from Emerson School. Alright, and last but not least, and this is the one who was unable to attend today, but I will make sure she gets her award and her yard sign, was Madeline Starman, also from Emerson School, who wrote a story called Epilogue. Congratulations again to them and just make note of these, these names, I'm sure we'll see them again. Alright, let's give another round of applause for all our authors, thank you. Alright, so get those yard signs in, we're driving home today, we wanna see all those in, that's exciting. Alright, thanks to everyone. Okay, I just wanna mention too, um, Gareth is attending the meeting via phone and Nikki was not able to be with us tonight, so I just wanted to mention that. Alright. Alright, we'll give a few minutes here and then we'll have Angie come up to tell us about Washington School.
Okay, alright, thanks for your patience here. Alright, so we wanna hear a welcome from Washington School, so take it away.
Uh, thank you, hi, welcome to Washington School. Uh, my name is Angie Britto and I am excited to welcome the board here. I think the last two years, we haven't actually presented because of the pandemic, so it's exciting to actually have you here today. So I do have some people to introduce, as I said, I'm Angie Britto, I'm the principal here. Um, I also have Ms. Van Arsdale, our Assistant Principal, who I could not do my job without, so kudos to her. Um, and also another person that I could not do my job without is Kirsten Sinkovich. Um, Kirsten is the lead teacher in our SLC program, um, our Structured Learning Community, which we'll be highlighting a little bit about tonight. Um, so again, welcome, um, we wanna just, we did the brief introductions, I'll kind of give you a brief overview of Washington School and then I'd like to go into a little bit more about what our SLC, uh, Structured Learning Community Program is all about and how it's really become an important part of our school community here. Um, different ways that we've built out that program and built up more opportunities for our students to be included as one school community and then some of the wonderful partnerships that we have that help to support our program. Um, so just a quick overview on Washington School, um, as of today, we have exactly 600 kids, uh, grades K to five. Um, our mascot is Rory, uh, he often gets cited at some of our special events, um, and we also have baby Rory's that we hand out as, um, class rewards for, uh, some of our SEL initiatives. Um, we are proud of our social emotional program, learning program, which includes our, uh, PaaS program, uh, for kind of reinforcing positive behaviors and ways that kids contribute positively to our school community by being, um, good to one another. And then we have special, uh, programs here, our PTO is a great partner and all of that, um, they help us to support our back-to-school picnic, our popsicles in the park programs at the beginning of the year, they sponsor our annual walk-a-thon, uh, help us with Uncle Pete's lunches, um, right now, we're currently collecting books for Bernie's Book Bank. Um, recently, we just did Camp Duncan with our fifth graders, which was exciting, um, and we have lots of other fun things that we do here too. Um, so one thing that makes us unique as a building is that we hold the Structured Learning Community Program here for the district. Um, it's probably one of my most favorite things about our school, um, and I'm really excited that I have Kirsten here today to kind of just give you guys a brief overview about what that program entails.
So the structured, Structured Learning Community began last year, we were in-person, uh, aside from the adaptive pauses of the district, but we've been in-person the whole time. We currently have six students who are in grades first through fourth and it consists of a full-time teacher and three and a half TAs. Our program is supported by social work, occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy, and we also get support from our district's Assistant Technology Specialist and our BCBA. And students receive support in academics, independent and social functioning, communication skills and fine and gross motor skills. One of the things that we've been able to do differently this year is have more inclusion opportunities for our SLC students. Most of our students, uh, have been unable to wear masks and we were limited on our inclusion opportunities last year, but currently, our students push in for things like morning meeting, social emotional learning time, all of the specials. Uh, we also started a classroom buddies program this year, so kids are coming into the SLC classroom from general education classes, um, and supporting us in different group activities. And then we also have students pushing in, uh, some of our students push in for science and social studies and then they also have lunch and recess with their peers.
Thanks Kirsten. Um, so this is more of just kind of a, a highlight in pictures of some of the ways that, as Kirsten mentioned, um, we are providing more opportunities for, um, our SLC to be part of our greater school community, we are one family. Um, one thing that's really special is that we have SLC Spirit Day every Wednesday. Um, it's, we purchase or are provided the opportunity for staff members to purchase t-shirts, um, uh, earlier this year and, and kind of showing support and solidarity for the program, we all wear our SLC shirts on Wednesdays. Um, morning meeting is a really special thing that we've started up, as Kirsten mentioned, because, um, we're allowed to this year without as many, um, restrictions, so many of our kids, all of our kids rather go into their homeroom classes every morning, um, to sit and be a part of the class and work on things like saying hello, um, sharing their favorite songs, sharing their favorite foods and, um, also playing some group games, so it's really cool. Um, another way that we, uh, because of the opportunities to expand, uh, through being able to mix kids with classes again this year, um, specials has been a real treat, so, uh, the students attend art, music, and PE and library every week and it's really been great to see ways that our specialist teachers are adapting their lessons to, uh, make sure that all of our kids have the opportunity to participate and also support one another. Um, as Kirsten mentioned, we do have a buddy program, um, we do buddies and have done buddies historically at Washington where classes will, older groups might partner up with a younger group and do different activities like reading activities or math, um, and then we've also expanded that for SLC, so they have opportunities for other peers to go into the classroom, they work together on different projects, different art projects or different, different learning activities, so that's been a really nice, uh, expansion this year. Um, also, uh, we've been able to expand out our science and social studies programming this year, um, including more opportunities for collaboration with grade-level peers. Uh, one of our students currently attends science and social studies in his classroom every day, um, and that's been a really nice, um, shift for us. And one of the best parts of the day for everyone at school is lunch and recess, um, it's really a treat to watch how our kids have all, um, really embraced, um, playing with one another and it, we, for most of this year, we had zones for recess, but, so they're, they played in their homeroom, with their homeroom classes in their zones and it's really been, um, a lot of fun to see how the staff engage with the kids, um, but also how the kids engage with one another. Oh, and this is, uh, the one that we have our video on, so this is just, um, an example of the types of instruction, I don't know if you wanna kind of give a, a brief overview on what? I don't know if you want to kind of give a brief overview on what...
So that was an example of some of the reading work we do. Most of our materials are adapted, so this is an adapted book. We're working on color skills and modeling with the device. At the time of this video, this student had only had a few weeks of exposure with his device. He was with the picture system before, so we were just introducing the skill and the concept, so.
And he's quite a little love bug, he's one of our favorites for sure. Okay, I think... Lastly, we just wanted to touch on some of the partnerships we have with, at the school that help to make our programming even stronger. First and foremost, our Washington PTO has been amazing at supporting some of our initiatives around SLC along with just educating our Gen Ed staff on different strategies and ways that they can be more adept their teaching and be more inclusive to all learners. So we've partnered with a series of lunch and learns where staff have the opportunity to volunteer to stay in during lunch. PTO provides lunch and Have Dreams provides training on growing professional development for our teachers. So we're excited about our next lunch and learn on May 25th, so it's another opportunity for us to learn and grow together as a staff as well. I would be remiss if I also didn't say thank you to the board and to Dr. Olson and Dr. Frost for all of your support and helping to make this SLC program so successful. We're really grateful for the ways that you guys have helped us and continue to help us grow. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions if anyone has them.
Thank you all for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you for really highlighting the SLC program and gosh, I wish I counted the number of times partnership was said. It's certainly of value here at Washington School, so, all right, thanks for sharing that.
And, you know, as Larry said, you, Kirsten and your team and the administrators in this building have a really, really hard job and it just amazes me that even on the hardest day, you wouldn't trade it for anything else. And it makes me feel so good and so proud when you know you have the right people working with the kids and that is so clear here. And every time, you know, Leanne and I talk about it or I get to see it myself, it's just another confirmation again of what the great things that we're able to do here. And I also want to echo your thank you to the board as the board did allow us to invest a little extra staffing into helping to train the whole Washington staff, that this wasn't just about the five adults in this program, but how is the whole building going to embrace this? And I think we're starting to see some of the dividends of that, so just thank you, thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, all right, now we are going to transition and we're going to, Eric's going to give our COVID update and recommendations for changes to the health and safety guidelines.
Yes, thank you. As I've shared with the board, we have been watching our positive cases slightly climb each week since we've been back from spring break. We do believe that that most likely has to do with spring break travel and then people are back and are spreading it a little bit. We don't believe that there is cause for concern at this time, but it is something that we are continuing to watch. Despite where we are right now, the administration is recommending that the board eliminate social distancing as one of our mitigations as we believe that is no longer needed. And I also know that both the board and administration has talked about the possibility of also removing the mitigation of unvaccinated parents having to show proof of a negative test before volunteering in the building. So as the board knows, administration has been thinking carefully about this. However, with our numbers slightly climbing and because the governor's order currently runs through April 30th, that we are still to follow this. It's our recommendation that we leave it in place for now. Obviously, if the governor does not renew, then it's only going to be in place for one more week. And if the governor does renew, then we can obviously talk about coming back to the board when we think it's appropriate to eliminate that mitigation as well. And then lastly, I do get questions sometimes from parents of what about putting the mitigations back? What's going to happen if the numbers start to climb rapidly? And just as easily as we took them away, we can just as easily put them back. So it would really depend on what the circumstances were at that time and where we were, but just know that we are fully prepared and ready if we had to do that, but I don't anticipate that happening. So we just have the one recommendation for tonight, thank you.
Okay, how about questions or comments from the board?
I personally would, Gareth, I personally would like to see us also remove the social, the requirement for unvaccinated adults at this time. I think it's just, I think, a bit of a discrimination at this point. And it's also, not just that, it's those who are actually, are vaccinated being asked for their vaccination cards in itself is unfair, it often ends up being parents asking other parents, for example, the PTOs who are volunteering for pizza days. I think as a community, we need to move past this, so I'm in favor of removing that requirement right now as well.
Did Gareth, did I hear him correctly? He wants to remove the requirement of unvaccinated parents or volunteers coming into the building?
To remove the negative test.
With a regular negative?
Yes, remove the negative test requirement.
And also removing the request of proof of vaccination for those who are vaccinated. I support that, by the way.
So both things or just the one?
Both.
Both things?
Yeah, I mean, if you're not going to, if you're not going to require an unvaccinated person to be vaccinated, then what's the purpose of requiring a vaccinated person to prove that they're vaccinated? At that point, the one, it just becomes moot, so.
Okay, any, any other board members thoughts?
I agree with that.
I agree with that. In fact, I'd be happy to make the motion and add removal of the mitigation for...
Do we, do we need to make a motion? If it's just a recommendation on your part? If we can say we have a consensus and we're asking you to reconsider? Or do we have to make the actual motion?
Well, it isn't action items.
Okay.
I have the language right here, I'll make the motion. So I move that the Board of Education, Community Consolidated School District 64, Niles, Park Ridge, Illinois, approve the removal of social distancing and the requirement for unvaccinated adults to show proof of a negative test before volunteering in schools from the District 64 Health and Safety Guidelines effective Monday, April 25th.
Second.
All right, Phyllis had the motion, Larry had the second. How about discussion from the board?
I agree exactly with what Tom said.
Hey, you know, when I'm on, I hear what you guys are saying. I'd like to wait till the governor's order and just see where our numbers are, you know, just because they are climbing, you know, not climbing, but they are going up, so that's where I am. And it's only a week more till the governor's order is in place at this point. Carol, what do you think?
I'll vote yes, and the governors are, I don't know, I mean, it could be renewed, so it could be longer than a week too.
No, 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 you're right, you're right, but the current one, no, you're absolutely right.
Right, you're saying until we know what's going to happen, I'll vote in favor of the motion.
In favor of which?
Whatever Phyllis just said. Did someone have a second? Or Larry had the second?
And your, your motion included the removal of, of requiring unvaccinated individuals to show proof, okay.
That's correct.
And I would vote yes for that as well because with or without the governor, I just, I've always thought that it was discriminatory. I mean, to require one group of people. When, when, yes, vaccinations make a huge difference and I'm in support of vaccinations. However, they're not, the person coming into our building who's vaccinated isn't 100% not going to, you know, pass along COVID. So at that point, I just don't really know what we're doing.
Also, I think that these kids and parents are playing together in sports heavily. They're traveling together, they're carpooling together, they're together. So what would, why discriminate against the unvaccinated? When we, following the science, know that vaccinated still get COVID, so.
We have unvaccinated kids in our school who are no longer testing, who are no longer required to test,
This just seems to make sense.
Who are no longer required to prove that they've tested. So, you know, there's a lot of them as well, if I'm not mistaken. So the several parents, however, that are going to be coming through our schools, I'm not quite sure how that's going to impact differently.
Great, okay.
Let's move.
Want to take a roll call?
Anything else? I think we're ready for vote.
Sellus?
Yes.
Sodos?
Yes.
Labinski, yes. Pearl?
No.
Riles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yep.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay. All right. Now, this is the point of the meeting where we welcome public comments. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments can be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools, but we ask that you refrain from making comments concerning individual students or staff members. The board uses this time to listen to community questions and concerns but will not respond immediately to requests for information. Additionally, the board cannot take formal action on non-agenda items. Contact the board president via email if you wish to discuss your topic further. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address if you're comfortable for the minutes. So are there any public comments? If you want to come up to the podium, thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Roberts-Esterling. I want to thank you all for your service, Dr. Olson and the board. I'm a parent in 64 and I'm a teacher in District 28 in Northbrook. I was also a CPS teacher for about 15 years. I first want to thank also the teachers and staff and administration. Washington, that was awesome, it was really nice to see. I'm a field parent, but I really liked seeing it and being in your building, so thank you. This, the topic of my comment is, you know, hopefully we're moving away from this constantly shifting landscape and moving out of this pandemic, I hope. And I think it's really time, I'm going to urge the board to kind of step back and look at the big picture about what kids and teachers need. Those are the steps we're taking in my district right now. Not that we're not still talking about COVID, we are every Friday, I'm on our mitigation committee. But I'm also on the instructional leadership team for my district and we know the landscape is different now than it has ever been. In 20 years of my teaching, it's very different. And I think it's really time to start to use the data that we have about kids to really inform and guide some bigger decisions beyond just instruction. Although the first one I want to address is instruction. I know you're going to be approving a new math curriculum and I am really hoping that the board will be sort of enforcing the teaching of that curriculum with fidelity for every teacher in this district. And also supporting teachers to teach that curriculum with fidelity, meaning like teachers aren't just randomly doing things or giving random homework. We're paying a lot for it and in order to see if it's working, we need to use it correctly. I also know that you are getting a lot of data that's pointing to anxiety in kids in schools. Behavior referrals are up. So I want to urge you to start to look at that data in a more structured and cohesive way and think about how we are supporting kids. And I'm not talking about pullout social work. I'm talking about robust tier-one classroom interventions and instruction around ensuring that children are learning strategies to manage anxiety and also that you are supporting teachers in seeing and recognizing the signs of anxiety in kids. It's going to look like using the bathroom a lot. It's going to look like getting tissues a lot. It's going to look like trying to get a pencil a lot, talking out, that's anxiety and it should not result in a behavior referral. And the last thing I would like to pull up on my phone notes is thinking about differentiation in the classroom, not just primary challenge and channels of challenge. I think that's another area that we need to be thinking about more proactively. Kids who are in the classroom who may not be necessarily qualifying for gifted programming deserve to be getting their needs met in the classroom. I think these will result in a more progressive and stronger school district in the coming years. And again, I want to thank everybody for their hard work. My daughter's having a wonderful experience as a student. I'm having a wonderful experience as a parent. And I do hope that, you know, some of these things over the next year can sort of start to come to fruition. Thank you.
All right, all right, other public comments?
Hi, my name's Rachel George Jacobs. I'm a carpenter parent, I'm also a former Washington student, so it's kind of fun to be back in this building. It looks, this room is very different than when I graduated here and like, I won't say the year, it's a long time ago. So it's fun to be back and to hear about all the awesome things that are happening here at Washington and other places in the district. I did, and I hope someday, you know, I can talk about other things because I am really excited about other things going on in the district. I'm a school counselor in another district. SEL, like, you know, PACE and other, you know, planning things are really important to me that you guys are all working on right now too. But tonight, I did want to talk a little bit about COVID mitigations. My daughter's going to be so excited about field trips, first of all, so thank you. I mean, she still complains about not getting to go to the promised Brookfield one in kindergarten, even though we have a membership and go regularly, but she's going to be very excited about that. So I, you know, I want to be clear that I don't disagree with all of the decisions that are making, being made by any means. And I understand the really difficult position that you've all been put in, not as public health officials with already very full plates as a board and very full administrators that you're trying to accomplish in this, in this district. But what I would like to see is for us to have a tiered-layered plan, similar to how we do with MTSS, RTEI, where we have a tier-one layer of interventions, a tier-two, and tier-three. And the reason for that is, you know, I know that, and I'm so glad to hear Dr. Olson say, we can bring back mitigations if needed as numbers go up, right? I think that's great, but that's all vote-dependent. And I think after being at some more contentious meetings with different community members, that has me really concerned and that if we can clearly communicate a plan that hopefully you never have to use, right? And in my work as a counselor, I do a lot of crisis planning, right? And the best crisis plan is one that you never have to use. But you want to have a plan in place that is clearly communicated to all of your stakeholders so that everybody knows what to expect. And so that if data points could be identified, that we move to certain things, I would be really appreciative. I think it could really help everyone to know what happens so that, you know... I think it could really help everyone to know what happened, so that, you know, today there was a plan and then a motion was made and that plan changed, right? Without notification necessarily to the community ahead of time about that, I have no issue what, what that specific thing was in any way. But I think those kind of last-minute, or what can feel like to a community ad hoc or last-minute decisions aren't necessarily how we want to work together collaboratively as a community. Our numbers are up, as Dr. Olson said. We're now in the high category of 200 cases per 100,000 as of yesterday. And so with no plan, that's concerning. I'm going to email Dr. Pearl, Dr. Olson, District 300. It's not my work, but they have a great mitigation plan that is like really outlined in an MTSS, RTI kind of framework. So thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Okay. All right. All right, we will move on to our next agenda item. And as you know, we have a strategic plan, we have our graphic there to remind us of that, and Eric's just going to provide an update on that.
All right. Dan, if the board would like to just look at the screen, I just wanted to be able to point out that now, if you want, or any community member can go online and be able to check in on the status of the strategic plan. So all of the objectives are written down on the left. Dan, if you just want to scroll, thank you. And then we have a status bar in the middle, so you can see what state of progress it's in. And then we have a target date at the end. And then if there is a presentation that goes with it, then that is also included there. So for instance, where it says implement the next five-year facility plan, there was a presentation, so we have that there, but that goal is not complete yet. That's why the bar hasn't gone all the way across. When it does, we would do another presentation and that would be there as well. So just wanted you to be able to see how we're sort of tracking and going through the plan. Lori's going to be up tonight to talk about math adoption, which was one of the objectives of the strategic plans. So I just wanted you to be able to see that first before we start our presentations where you start to see the conclusions of those goals. Thank you.
Any questions on the strategic plan or kind of where the status of it? Okay. And I imagine then Eric, you'll keep us, well, we can look at this, but if there's any other updates, and as you said, presentations might be going along with that, and we could probably highlight which area it aligns with.
Yep.
Okay. All right. We want to keep focused on that. All right, thank you.
Actually, I really like the bar, like being able to just click and see how, you know, which area we're progressing on, what we haven't started yet, what, it really is helpful for both community and board members.
Okay, good.
Well, just a quick visual, you know, you don't even have to read a lot just to see. I agree with that. Okay. Tom's going to join via phone. All right, thanks, Tom. Okay. All right. Up next, we have, as Eric said, one of our strategic, and the strategic plan was a new math curriculum. So Lori is going to present on that. Lori and team.
Lori and team.
All right. No assigned seats here, yeah.
Well, perfect. Thank you, thank you. Oops, we turned that on for the opportunity tonight to talk with the board.
About our K-5 math adoption. So I have some representatives from our math review committee here with me tonight. Tracy Thomas is our K-5 math curriculum specialist. Cara Forrest is our tier-two intervention facilitator. Sandy Blethyn is our channels of challenge curriculum specialist. And Dana Bailey is a member of our third grade team from Roosevelt School. So thank you to all of you for being here. Tonight, as I said, we're going to share our recommendation for our new K-5 math resource. And Eric referenced this, but our K-5 math resource is linked to several initiatives that are happening in the district. The first is the strategic plan. One of our goals in the strategic plan is broadening best practice. And so this adoption assists us with, with that goal. The target specifically in the strategic plan is completing a curriculum review to increase best practices in math instruction with a focus on rigor. The second initiative that this aligns with is actually the curriculum review process. So in District 64, we have a curriculum review cycle that's part of our commitment to continuous improvement. Every five to seven years, we look at our curriculum materials, and we'll talk more about this in a minute. But that's directly aligned to the process that we went through. And then last, we as a district have a commitment to implementing core resources that support the implementation of the Illinois learning standards. Just in terms of a curriculum review, curriculum reviews are actually ongoing. So every five to seven years, we might look at adopting a curricular resource, but we have a team of experts and teacher leaders in our buildings who keep us abreast of current research and best practice in instruction. So even though this is the time right now in the curriculum cycle where we're choosing a curriculum, we've actually been exploring best practices every school year related to math. Second, the curriculum review cycle is very collaborative. So when we go to form that review committee where we select, in this case, new math materials, we pull together between 25 and 30 people. And they're teachers and administrators. The teachers are from all grade levels. They have lots of different roles, and they have lots of different experience levels. Because we want to look at not only what would fit with some of our veteran teachers, but with some of our teachers who have less experience as well. And then last, the process itself is really comprehensive. It's very rigorous, and it's got a lot of parts and pieces to it. And I'm going to explain what those, those parts and pieces are. So in consultation with an expert in the area of school mathematics, we identified three programs that we wanted to bring for a review by this larger committee of about 27 people. And we began our work together as a committee by participating in professional learning. So we actually met right here in this room on a summer day, right? It's almost, yeah, summer week, really it was. So it was, yeah, you guys remember it was a week. It felt like a day to me. But it's sort of fateful that we're back here tonight to share this recommendation. But we really took a deep dive into the Illinois learning standards and into the mathematical practices and into looking at, at what best practice is in math instruction. And at this time, we knew that we wanted to use three rubrics to look very, very closely at these three programs. And so we spent some time with a consultant, building inner raider reliability as a team. So we wanted to make sure that when we were using the rubrics, that we were looking for the same things and evaluating them in the same way. And so the rubrics are actually from an organization that's called the Mathematics Curriculum Analysis Project. But, but there are three rubrics that were developed to assist school districts with, with looking at curriculum. One helped us look at key Illinois learning standards at each grade level. One helped us look at what are called the mathematical practices at each grade level. The mathematical practices are actually the same across grade levels, but it helped us look at them at each grade level. And then third was a tool that helped us focus on assessment and equity and technology. And that tool's really important because it speaks to things, like one of our speakers tonight talked about, like differentiation, right? And rigor. And how do we support students who are struggling? And how do we support students who are advanced, right? And need a greater level of challenge? So those were the three tools that we looked at. Those, those were probably the longest days of the week, right? When we went through each program and, and, and looked at, at lessons and, and we had a team from each grade level, right? Digging into these materials. And through the use of, of these rubrics, we were able to eliminate one program from the mix. So then we had sort of these two finalists. And we decided that the next step would be to identify lessons and units and do them with real-life kids, right? So we spent some time this summer then in our grade-level teams, planning for doing these lessons with students, so that when students came back in the fall, we could work with them and, and see if what we were seeing in the program, you know, on the table in the book, was the same as our experience with kids in the classroom. So, and all three of our curriculum specialists helped with piloting, but Ms. Bailey actually lived a pilot, right? And, and she can talk about this more in a minute, but when you're a classroom teacher and you're piloting a curriculum, it's a pretty cool day when you get to tell your kids that they're participating in something really important. So they sort of square their shoulders up and, you know, they're kind of on a mission, right? So you say, "You're going to help us pick our new math program. We're going to do these lessons or this unit." So you'll, you can talk about that in a minute. That was pretty neat. But we actually ended up then selecting a program called Eureka Math Squared. And Eureka Math Squared is a new program, but it's a version of a program that has been widely used by other districts. So, and Adam's nodding because I think his kids are in a district that actually use Eureka now, but you're going to wish they had Eureka Math Squared.
Because it's exponentially greater.
It's exponentially greater, yes, it is. The marketing campaign's working, at least on us, right? So, but there were a lot of reasons why we, why we picked this program. The first is that it was aligned to the standards and the math practices. So we really found that when we did our, our due diligence with looking through the program. The second is that it provides lots of opportunities for differentiation. So the lessons have supports for students who are performing at different levels. And the program also has an excellent formative assessment component. So you can find out where kids are in their learning in real time and then make decisions about what to teach students in math class. So that, that, that kind of technology is really important for teachers who are forming small groups around skills for students. It's very engaging. The students gave us lots of feedback about what they liked about it. And, and Ms. Bailey can talk more about that in a minute, too. There are lots of opportunities for something that's embedded in the standards that's called math talk, right? So when we think about math as adults, we probably think about learning the rule and doing the problem, or doing all 25 problems on the worksheet page, right? The idea in math now is not that kids just learn the rules or the algorithms, it's that they actually understand the reason why they're carrying the one, right? They understand the reasons behind the math so that they know when something makes sense and when something doesn't make sense. Now, they still have to learn the algorithm, right? We're not abandoning that. But this provides students with the opportunity to get some procedural fluency, but then also understand what it is that they're doing. And math talk is a big part of that. So students have the opportunity to talk with their kids, use multiple strategies to solve problems, and present their ideas to classmates. And then last, something that we looked at was the platform for the delivery of the curriculum. And this, this actually has a very state-of-the-art, very comprehensive tech platform that enables the program to be implemented with some ease. And I want to show you something, but I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get to it from here. It's linked in here, but let me just see. I think I'm going to have to program it. Okay. So, um, there you go. Yeah, I'm going to, oh, here it comes. Nope, it didn't go. Okay, one second. Let me explain it first. So one of the neat things about Eureka Math Squared is there are wordless videos in it. And so there are about three wordless videos from each module. And what a wordless video does is it helps students connect their learning to a real-world experience, but it doesn't require any reading or language. But it sort of promotes this conversation about math. So engagement comes naturally within it. So after the students watch a video, the teachers would invite them to share, you know, "What do you notice about this situation?" And sort of get the math conversation going. So this is actually a video from a third-grade math class that Ms. Bailey's students watched. And, and you'll see, I'll just show you a little snippet of it so you can see what it looks like. Just a quick look at what a wordless video is, right? So there's, and that ties to your multiplication unit, right? In third grade. So, and we found that the students were engaged not just in lessons like this, but in other lessons as well. There's a lot of hands-on activities, a lot of problems that start more basic but become more complex, so that teachers have multiple points of entry for kids. So if somebody's struggling, they have a place for kids to start. If somebody needs a level of challenge, they have a place for kids to go right away. But I want to give our, our committee members the opportunity to talk about some of the things that they observed with kids. So Ms. Bailey, do you want to talk about?
Sure. So I will start with that video first. They love little noises, so even though it is wordless, that was engaging for them just to kind of see those characters. I was amazed at the conversation that came after that video. So usually after the video, it'll say, "What do you notice and what do you wonder?" And those two questions sparked so many things because every kid looks at it in a different way. For us, we're like, okay, that's going to teach them equal groups multiplication. We have some students that are just saying, "Oh, I saw, you know, three people in one car." Some students are able to identify rows and columns already, and they're able to speak with their peers because part of that math talk, Eureka has a teaching, it's called a talking tool. It's basically just a little like sentence starters that helps them express their ideas mathematically, which isn't always the easiest. It's just, you know, "I got four." Okay, well, how did you get four? And that's why we love Eureka Square, because they can tell you like why things are the way they are in math. And before, as Lori mentioned, it really was, okay, here's our standard algorithm, here's how we do it, now we're going to practice, we're going to reteach, we're going to enrich it. But this is so much more of the conceptual understanding, and I think they're amazed this year at what they know, and they are very proud, and they let the school know that, "We're doing Eureka lessons." So it's, it's very evident that they have really taken ownership over this. But as a teacher, I am amazed at their engagement, their excitement, the real-world problems. I mean, yay, we get to talk about roller coasters. You know, one's like a lemonade stand. It's things they can relate to. And in some of those math story problems, which, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade, we really get into those two, three-step problems, when they can relate to it and Eureka breaks it down for them. Like Lori said, you know, we can start with a simple problem, those that are ready to move on, all right, there you go. So every problem set has that entry point for students. So I really found that every student in my class, you know, they felt comfortable sharing something, you know, they all found something from that video, and it was just such a great starting point, moving forward in that lesson, that I could make sure every learner was reached.
Okay. All right. If something comes to mind, feel free to chime in. So in our last student achievement report, one of the things that I talked about is a good rule of thumb for districts is we should expect that our core curriculum reaches 80 to 85% of our students. So from our students' experience in what we call tier-one, or our core curriculum, we should expect should expect no more than 10% to 12% probably of our students to need some extra intervention support. We always want it to be even less than that, but we have intervention programs and what we call X-Blocks, time during the school day where we can support struggling kids. We have programs like that to support kids who are struggling. So one of the things that we looked at when we looked at our core program was, is there an intervention program that partners nicely with this core program, right? And so we did sort of a curriculum review on a smaller scale for Bridges Intervention. And the program that we ended up selecting is called Bridges Intervention. And we ended up selecting this program for a number of reasons. First, it provides really nice, intensive, small-group instruction. It's hands-on and it's very engaging. There are lots of game-like aspects to the Bridges Intervention program. And when students are struggling with something, it's not their favorite, right? But this intervention program really pulled our kids in, and they had a lot of enthusiasm about participating in the activities. Our interventionists who worked with younger students with this program, did this with younger students, felt that it really built number sense. So sometimes when kids are struggling in math and they get to fourth or fifth grade, it's almost like they're missing that foundational number sense. They don't understand why they're doing things. And Bridges Intervention really can help struggling learners build that, if they don't get it in Eureka Squared. But we feel pretty confident that they're going to get it in that program. One of the nice things about these two programs is they really mirror each other in terms of style and modules. So we crosswalked the programs and found that there's a nice connection between them. So the lessons really complement them. And then the program itself has really nice progress monitoring tools that align with our MTSS program. And Kara, actually, I know you're-
Yeah, I'll just say a few things, because I'm always looking at both, throughout this process, I really was looking at both Eureka Squared and this Bridges Intervention, sort of from the lens of the student who struggle, the students who struggle. And both programs, I think, are going to really provide a lot of strong resources for those teachers working with those students. One thing I didn't say before with Eureka, to kind of piggyback on what Lori was saying about the whole equip program, the formative assessment that they have, it will really, I feel it'll really help our teachers, some of our co-teachers, our special ed teachers, they will have a clear path on how to go backwards and help students when they're co-teaching. And I feel that Bridges Intervention, like Lori said, is a great pair with Eureka Squared. And I was able to observe a few, a couple of our interventionists as they were using this program, and it is very clear, very explicit, and simple. And simple in the sense that it's not overstimulating, but it gets, it's very direct and to the point. So I feel very excited about the opportunities for our teachers to use these programs with that end of the spectrum.
So we're asking the board tonight to approve the adoption of Bridges Intervention and Eureka Math Squared. The Bridges program actually comes with modules, manipulative kits, and student materials. And once we purchase those, we have those forever, or until the research tells us that there's something better that we should have. And the Eureka Math Squared program includes a five-year subscription to the digital platform. It includes consumable workbooks for students to use, classroom manipulative kits, as well as printed teacher editions, although those teacher editions are also available in a digital format. And then we will use Title II funding to support teacher professional development for both of these programs. So we're in the process of mapping out an extensive professional development program, both with Great Minds, the publisher of Eureka, and with the Math Learning Center, the publisher of Bridges Intervention. And then, of course, in our district, we're lucky enough to have early release Wednesdays. And we dedicate on one Wednesday a month, 90 minutes to professional learning. And so next year, that focus for our kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers will be math, in addition to release time and other opportunities for learning that happen during the year. I want to just take a minute and thank the committee members for all of their hard work. An adoption like this takes an incredible amount of time during the summer and in the classroom and outside the classroom. And one of the things I want to highlight is that we have representatives on our K-5 committee from middle school, right? And the reason that we have that is because we want our middle-school teachers to better understand what's happening K-5. And then we have K-5 people who serve on our middle-school committee. So the experience of our K-5 committee gets brought to middle school, and the experience of our middle-school committee gets brought to K-5. So the middle-school teachers are still looking at resources right now. But we have had some overlap in terms of committee members, so they're well-aware of what would be an appropriate continuation of Eureka. So they're still looking at materials, though. So at the end of next year, we'll be back here again with a middle-school group. So again, I just want to thank my teammates for being here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has and-
I always have a question.
Yes, yes, good, good.
Especially when it comes to curriculum. You and I have talked about curriculum for years. But I'm just curious, with full-day kindergarten coming next year, and the reviews and assessments, I was hoping there would be a kindergarten teacher here today, tonight. But with full-day kindergarten coming, math skills, I think full-day kindergarten, kindergartners are a key, because then it flows all the way up. And so when you're, they come in with such a wide range of skills in kindergarten. How do you assess that?
Yeah, kindergarten's sort of the Wild West, right? They do come in at varying levels. We assess kindergarten in a number of ways. There are some formal ways, right? So we have some benchmark assessments that we administer to kindergartners, like counting objects or counting, right, just counting. And there are a couple of other, what are called, early math assessments for that. But some of the most powerful assessments for kindergartners are teacher observation. So, and I, one of our kindergarten teachers is actually probably one of our biggest fans of Eureka, and she unfortunately was unable to be here tonight. But one of the things that this program does is it provides lots of activities where teachers can observe and assess students where they're at, right? So, and Tracy, maybe you want to talk a little bit about kindergarten and what we noticed with the kindergartners? Okay.
Thank you. I did have the unique opportunity, as the math curriculum specialist, to be in all of the classrooms that we're piloting this year. Kindergarten was one of my favorite places to be. It was just a very exciting experience, and you're right, the children do come in with a huge, wide range of skills, right? The great thing about Eureka is, like Lori said, there's a lot of opportunities for observational assessments. The program comes with very clear descriptors of what students should be able to do by the end of lessons. It comes with proficiency scales, like a student is on track to master this skill. It gives a lot of suggestions if a student is not on track of what you can do to support them. Most of the assessments that come with the Eureka Squared program are performance-based assessments, especially in kindergarten. They're not doing any, like, paper-and-pencil-type things. It's a lot of, like, the teacher's facilitating a discussion with the small group, or is observing them during a fluency activity, or something like that. The great thing is, the Eureka Math Squared program is a 50-minute program in kindergarten, and we've actually allocated a little bit more than that next year with full-day kindergarten. So students will have plenty of opportunities, you know, to engage with the materials and the lessons at different times.
I was just going to say, an anecdotal, something anecdotal, a colleague of ours, her son is in this kindergarten teacher's class, and she said to me, she goes, "Kara, I cannot believe my son, Henry, is talking about number bonds and telling me these numbers go together." And so, that was unprompted, I didn't even really ask. She said she was just sharing some excitement. But I thought that was super, that's important, to have a kindergarten coming home and talking about numbers and number bonds. I think it's pretty cool, so.
You know, one of the things that's interesting about kindergarten is you have to, at the start of the year, be conscious of the fact that if somebody doesn't understand something, it might be that they haven't had the experience yet, right? Versus when they're in first or second and third grade and you know what curriculum they've been raised in. So we start the year by assessing kindergartners, but then we do a lot of push-in with our interventionists rather than treating the students like they're already behind, right? They're not behind, they just haven't had those experiences yet. So we have other teachers push into the classroom to help with small groups. So that's another kind of unique thing about Kinder.
With full-day kindergarten, how do you expect the math skills in kindergarten to increase based on half-day kindergarten?
Double. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it's interesting. We have had lots of conversation about the pacing guide at kindergarten and how eventually that might impact the pacing guide at first grade, right? And second grade as well. So that's one thing we're going to be keeping our eye on next year, is what that looks like. But the program itself is paced out for that full-day experience, so we'll be able to tell.
Thank you, that's great. That's my favorite group, too.
You missed your calling, Larry.
Yeah. I don't know, I still get to go watch and play.
How about other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I just want to say, thank you. Lori, you always come so well-prepared and, like, for people like me who aren't following the curriculums, I understand it perfectly clear, and so I want to thank you. And then, thank you for the summer days that you spent. I think people in the public think, "Oh, we're teachers and they have all summer off." And that's kind of not true. So thank you for your research, your time and your energy, and putting it together. And I think, I mean, our district could not be, have better teachers and administrators. So thank you.
Well, I'm going to follow up with Phyllis's compliment, which I appreciate with a question. So I am, and I just can't remember what we do about this. So I think about, as Lori alluded to, like, in math, when I learned eight times five, you know, you're just doing these rote things. And so if, you know, how do we help parents a little bit? Students come home and they say, "I watched a wordless video." And, "Was the sound not working? Like, what happened?" You know? And what does math talks mean? It's problems. So how do we educate our parents on, you know, this paradigm shift?
So one of the things that's a strand in our professional development next year is parent education. So, and we're hoping to, we're kind of ambitious about it, but we're hoping to design not only, like, onsite things, but also podcasts. We want to have our own broadcasting channel for math. So we're hoping to be able to do both of those things. But Tracy, do you want to talk about the parent component?
Sure, right, right. We had already started planning how we will support parent education, and we were talking about possibly a parent university at the beginning of the year, like you said, some podcasts, maybe. Eureka Squared also has a great resource for parents. On a daily basis, there's a sheet that can be sent home that explains everything that was highlighted in the lesson, and gives examples and reasons of, you know, how the students were taught. It's called the Practice Partner. And so a lot of our pilot teachers used that resource as they were piloting to send things home. And I think they had a lot of really positive responses from the parents about that support. So, yeah.
There's also, every topic, so we're in a unit, there's different topics. There is a topic overview that is sent home to the parents, and what they really enjoyed was, on the back, there's an example of, like, a real-life, at-home, hands-on activity that relates. So if it's like fractions, it's like, okay, if you're baking with your child, like, just some fun ways for parents to also kind of experience the math in that real-world context. So I think my parents had fun with that this year.
That's great.
One more question. How much of this can you apply to special ed?
Do you want to talk about that? So I was, I was able to have the opportunity, actually, Tracy and I were able to have the opportunity to sit in with a, one of Eureka Squared's curriculum specialists who has, who spent about five years teaching Eureka, because Eureka Squared hadn't come out yet, in a self-contained special ed class, as well as in co-teaching special ed. And so after that, that was where I sort of learned about the whole formative assessment piece, that, because all of the teachers will have access to previous grades modules, so they can, right, so they can work, so they can start a unit and identify in their students that have IEPs where they need some skills to be built up in order for them to be successful. And so then they're able to, literally, there's like, you follow sort of a map that tells you, "Teach this module," or "Start with this module, then this module, and then this module," across a couple of grades. And that was the one thing, because I was a little bit worried about this, that as well. And I felt pretty confident after that, after we had spent some time talking with their curriculum specialist and thinking about how that's going to learn. And I think that that'll be one of the areas that we'll focus on, building professional development with our special ed teachers and learning how to use that next year, so.
Thank you.
How about Carol and Kira, any other questions?
No, Eric answered our questions. He sent a long email before. I don't know if he wanted to include any of that in the packet, but it was informative. We don't have to go over it now.
Yeah, and I'll just say, as a former curriculum person, I'm very excited about this program and very excited that the team chose it, so I'm really looking forward to it. It's going to be really fun.
Is Ms. Rosakis still a kindergarten teacher? Or did she move up?
Yes, that's who loves it.
My daughter had her, and then she went to a different school.
She actually is on our math committee. We didn't let her graduate.
I saw her name there, and when you put up kindergarten, I was like, "She's on it." So the kindergarten's covered. She was great.
I think, Kira, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments there. Sorry, if that goes back and this is a little difficult to speak here, but I'd like to also echo the comments around, thanking the team and the assets that Lori and the team have done in going through that. It's obviously, I think, based on the questions that I had asked ahead of time, the responses I got, it was a very rigorous process, and even tonight it came out in terms of the presentation, that this was no quick decision here, and was a lot of research went into it. I think, though, you know, there was a joke early on, we're spending over half a million here on this curriculum, right, and there was that joke early on about Eureka and the marketing, and then this is a big industry in terms of attracting the spend. And I think, Lori, it'd just be good, I think, for the public to hear as well that, you know, there was some independent research done as well. And could you, could you give us a few minutes there about how you went to independent research as well, and make sure that, you know, to decide between these final three and to understand how research-based the curriculum was, well?
Yes, so it's difficult for, I mean, typically, there's not an independent organization that's assessing, for example, student achievement around using specific curricular materials, right? So some, I mean, districts will do their own in-house assessments of achievement, but that's not typically happening out, from externally, I guess I would say. But there is an organization that's called EdReports that does evaluate curricular materials. And they use rubrics, and the rubrics are somewhat similar to the rubrics that we use to assess the three programs that we looked at. We did not look-
to assess the three programs that we looked at. We did not look at the Ed Reports preview before we did our own work, but we did not bring anything to the table that wasn't already independently vetted. So, and that, that's just a commitment that we made. You know, it's not, Ed Reports doesn't always have all of the information to make every assessment about a program. One of the pieces that's missing from Ed Reports is context, right? Because we know that, that the biggest lever that you can pull for a student is his or her teacher, right? And that's sort of what's missing in the, in an Ed Reports assessment. We're very lucky to have very high-quality teachers in District 64, and also a commitment to professional development. But objectively, from a resource perspective, what we looked at was vetted. Now, Eureka Squared, as we said, is new. So, Eureka is vetted, and the math is essentially the same. What they changed in Eureka Squared were some of the usability pieces that teachers had some concerns about.
Thank you for that. Another question I have is, you know, a unit to study curriculum on the reading and writing side is being supplemented by phonics.
Gareth, can we just do a little louder? I just want to make sure we're hearing you.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Let me know when you're ready. Okay. Yeah, just a quick other question is, is around units of study, which we use on the reading and writing side, is supplemented by phonics? Just wanted to make sure here, you know, again, spending over half a million dollars, that you don't foresee the need to supplement this curriculum with anything additional to what's on the table tonight? And this kind of locks us in for the next five years for math?
Yeah, no, we don't foresee the need to supplement it. The intervention program that we're purchasing, just to be clear about that, is specifically for our intervention program, right? But it's not a supplement to the core curriculum. It complements the core curriculum, but it's not meant to supplement it.
And then, just last of all, is like, you know, the team, after they worked hard and through it, is just, if you could give us an idea, was it a close call, or was Eureka the clear winner?
I think Eureka was, well, you know what, it, yeah, it wasn't, it was the clear winner, but like, like, one of the things that, that teachers will always say when we're looking at two curriculum, is we wish that these two programs would get married and have a baby, right? Because there's always something that you love about one program, and always something that you love about another program. But when we sat and looked at all of the features, we came to consensus on Eureka Squared. We felt like it was, it was a better fit for a lot of different reasons. Some of those reasons were for the compacting of curriculum that happens in our Channels of Challenge program. Some of those reasons were related to scheduling, but the majority of those reasons were related to the math and the enthusiasm that we saw with our students.
Great. Thank you, Laurie and team. Appreciate it.
Okay. And Tom, I believe you've joined. Do you have any questions?
No, I just want to thank, thank her for the, for the presentation. It was really, really thorough.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tom. Okay, I think we are ready for the motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the SR3 funded adoption of Eureka Math and Bridges intervention as recommended by the K-5 Math Review Committee at the total cost of $573,416.
Second.
All right, Larry had the motion, Phyllis had the second. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I think we're ready for our vote.
Sotos?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Selas?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're moving along to our next agenda item, and I think Carol's gonna take it over from here.
Okay, we're on A5. This is the Board Policy Committee update and the first reading of changes to certain policies. So right now, our policy committee is Gareth and Phyllis. Gareth, we're kind of having trouble hearing you. Is it okay if Phyllis explains these policies? And Phyllis, do you mind?
Of course, yeah.
Just, you know, Gareth sounds like he's coming from outer space or something, so if you could do anything.
I'll change my headset as well, while you're doing that.
Underwater. Go ahead.
So, we met on March 15th, and we decided to make a few minor changes. One was to policy 2:140 regarding communications to and from the school board, and also policy 2:230, public participation at Board of Education meetings and petitions to the Board. And so, and we also made changes to policy number 4:20, funded balance policies to reflect the Board's desire for a more conservative approach to the budget and a fund balance. We met with Adam and Eric. We put our trust in you, we talked about it, and we changed it.
Okay, so yeah, all of these policies, they're in the packet. Anyone can review them, you know, if they want to. There's no action item tonight. This is just, right, the first reading to the ones that are being amended. Although I know that with the public comment, I think we already kind of incorporated that change, right?
We did, we did.
So, that is all. Does anyone have questions, comments?
Yeah, I think you recommended that one, if comfortable, Carol, so that was good for the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Can we move on to A6? Anyone? Who usually does that? Is that, Joel usually does that? Who's gonna? Eric, are you able to handle that?
So, we do have the report. You do have the personnel report in front of you. There, I mean, obviously, we can see if Joel comes back in a second, but I don't remember there being anything significant on this. As, obviously, at this time of year, you know, there are these resignations, so that just fills up a little bit more. Oh, there he is. Joel, anything special you wanted to say about the personnel report? And where's your team?
What's that?
Yeah. Where's your team?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, team of one. Sorry, I had to step out, I gotta ask the question. No, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward, this one will be one of our, as we've talked about before, this will be kind of one of the smaller ones. As we start to move forward, you'll, obviously, as we move into the heart of hiring season, you'll start to see a lot more of new hires. Unfortunately, as Larry said, we have some retirements and some resignations. We always wish those people well, but this is a pretty straightforward personnel report.
Does anyone have any questions for Joel?
How are we dealing with replacing? I mean, do we have a group of people to pick for custodian to replace those that retire and leave?
Yes, I mean, we've been okay so far as finding people, I think, with anything else. Have we seen a change in the number of applicants? As people are in most fields, absolutely. Have we been able to replace people? Yes. I would say the biggest issue that we're having is obviously the size of the pools. But I think that reflects not only for our custodians, but in a lot of other positions that we're seeing, and not only in school districts, but in a lot of other fields where it just seems that the number of applicants is just not the same.
Yeah, I talked to some people from another district the other day, and they're, they're in the same shape we are. They're out begging for TAs and...
Yeah. And I will say this in conversations with a number of my colleagues from other districts, we are doing better than a lot of the other districts. And I'm thankful for that. I think that has to do a lot with, not only, I think it has to do a lot with our schools, a lot with our reputation as a good place to work, and a lot with the way that people are treated within, not only by the administrators who lead them, but by their colleagues. And so, while others are in dire straits, we're doing okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have a motion? Anybody?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the personnel report dated April 21st, 2022, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the Board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment. Second.
Yep.
Phyllis had the motion, I think Denise had the second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Phyllis, can you do a roll call, please?
All right, Selas?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Kennedy? Gareth Kennedy? Pearl?
Yes.
Okay. Pearl?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Motion carries.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Thanks, Joel. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Okay, I just asked Eric about this, but I'm still confused. So maybe, and Carol, maybe you can help me out. So, on the consent agenda, there's the approval of the 2223 Parent-Student Handbook, but it's still being dra, it's in draft form, and it won't be available until the school year. So I don't know how we can approve it.
I had that question, too, and I don't think we saw the draft. I think we saw the prior one.
Right.
So it's like, we're approving the idea of it, not necessarily the content right now.
Approving that we can start, like, you know, editing it. But I guess, I guess that's where I'm confused on that one.
So you just want to discuss right now? We're not pulling it from the consent agenda. You just, you don't want your questions answered?
I'll just clarify that up for you. So you're not approving the actual handbook, you're approving certain policies that have been modified that are going into the handbook. So you're approving the fact that some policies that are contained within the handbook will be revised according to the revisions that have happened through press and all those other issues?
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Yeah, because that was confusing with the ongoing revisions that you're going to be doing.
Yeah, that's why I thought, we don't have the whole, I was thinking the same thing, Carol. Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion for this?
I'll take it. I move that the Board of Education, Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the consent agenda for April 21st, 2022, which includes bills, payroll, and benefits, approval of financial update for the period ending February 28th, 2022, second reading, and approval of policies from Press 108, approval of 2022, 23 Parent-Student Handbook, approval of the consolidated district plan, and destruction of audio closed recordings. None.
Second. Larry had the motion, Denise had the second. Do we have any further discussion? Nothing. Phyllis, can you do a roll call, please?
Lubinski, yes. Sotos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have approval of minutes. Let's see, we have the March 17 closed meeting and the March 17 regular meeting. And we'll note that the closed meeting minutes, they're more thorough than we previously used to have, based on, I believe it was Gareth who suggested it a while ago. Any questions from anyone, or revision? No? Okay. Does anyone want to make the motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the closed meeting on March 17th, 2022, and the regular meeting on March 17th, 2022.
Second.
Denise had the motion, Phyllis had the second. Do we have further discussion? Phyllis, can you do a roll call?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Riles?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have other discussions and items of information. Eric, do you want to go through this?
Sure. So the only one I really want to just highlight for the board is that we have listed the regular board meetings for next year. So I just wanted you to be able to see those and look at your calendars, and, you know, let, obviously let us know if you see any, any concerns, but we are bringing this to you now.
Just a question really quickly. What's the board workshop for January 12?
Yeah, sure. So, when Eric and I were talking about the school year, kind of, some other boards put in, like, times of the year when they're just gonna make sure, how do we do training, continuing, professional development? And so, we don't know what the topic is, but how do we just reserve the date that we will do some kind of IASB training at that time? And depending on what the board feels like they need, what they might want to do. So that's kind of what it, what it was. Just because it was hard to come up with a date, you know, we were struggling, or I was struggling getting a date for us to do this, and we ended up doing it before a meeting. So that's the idea behind it. Like District 62 displays, one of our, the other feeders to 207, they do two a year, and they just have it in their calendar, just so, it's an important thing that we continue to do.
So, I know we have these dates. I'd be in favor of moving it up or moving it to June, because if we do it in January, I think we'll have possibly four new members within the next few months. So then, you'll only be left with three people who had that training. So maybe...
So, I think, you know, and I think that should be clarified. I think when Eric and I, get me if I'm wrong, Eric, I think we would do when, you know, the new board comes in in April, we would do the typical orientation to the board, and this would be in addition. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right, but I'm just saying, like, are you, you're training people when four might leave, you know? So you're gonna do a whole thing with seven people, and then four might be gone in a few months. So I would be in favor of maybe doing it sooner, or, you know, later with the new board. But, I mean, that's just a thought.
Okay.
We don't have to decide today.
I hear you on that.
But it just seemed, you know, a little awkward with the January timing. I know it was a spot, but, you know, it's like, we have a December 15 meeting, January 12, and then January 26, that's like, three that are pretty close together.
Yeah. And then I think that we thought was, if we move it to December, people are like, oh my gosh, December's so busy. And, you know, so, I hear you on that. So other, other thoughts on that? No, I think it's a, I think it's a good point, Carol.
And then you have the February meeting, you know, a couple weeks after the January 26 meeting.
Yeah. My preference is, just with my work schedule, in November, December, January, and February, so if I, those months are additional items, but it's kind of my personal situation. So, I just wouldn't be able to take time out beyond, you know, more pressing matters, such as a regular, proper board meeting, or, you know, or committee of the whole, on an important topic. Time limit is best on...
I think we're having trouble hearing you, but are you saying you cannot attend these extra meetings? Is that...
Yeah, I would not, unless it's, you know, for something like training, I would avoid that in for myself in December, November, December, January, February.
Because that's a, that's a hard time for you work-wise, isn't that? Is that what you're kind of, I think, is that what I'm hearing, Gareth?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I'll take the time with urgent matters, right? And board business needs to be conducted, but for training, I have to be outside of that timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, I hear you. I think it was just the hope that if we just give it ahead of time, can we just kind of put it in our calendars? But, I mean, I don't know everyone's situation, so. Okay, well, do we want to look at it? Any other, if anyone has any other thoughts? I mean, certainly, we were just trying to see, how do we put it in instead of trying to schedule it? That was the thought process behind it. So we'll go back to it and certainly give any feedback you have on there. But it seemed like tonight, I mean, I heard a little bit, but I was beneficial, but we can, we can go from there. Okay. Okay, anything else, Eric, on that?
No.
Okay. All right.
Oh, then you had foyer requests, no memo of information, minutes from the Board Policy Committee, and then public comments. I just had a question about foyer requests. I think this group, this latest set might include one that board members might possibly have responsive documents. So, were we going to be contacted about that at any time?
Yeah, we always contact you if, if there's any reason why we need that.
I, I mean, I'm just saying that we have not yet been contacted. So you're saying that we're not going to be contacted?
Which specific foyer, Carol?
So there's one that said, let's see, all emails and written communications So there's one that said, let's see, all emails and written communications from the D, I think this is new. It looks similar to one we had before, though.
Yeah, it's similar. It was a different meeting, and so we proceeded in the same way we did for the other one.
Which is what the?
Tech pulled out all the responsive emails from the archives.
But this says and written communications.
Yes, emails.
No, it said emails and written communications.
Which?
But there are none.
None.
Would that be about that?
We weren't asked, though, if there are any other written communications besides emails.
Is it from the board president to the other members?
From the D64 school board and staff. It says to newspapers and other media, which I don't know if that exists.
Right.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any, you know, communications to media, but I don't think we were asked that. And then it said, notice of postponement. So, you know, this is a little different than the last one. It's not communications to each other. This is specifically
Right.
from us to, I don't know, newspapers, it looks like, and the media.
Yes. So it's notification to newspapers that a meeting has been postponed or rescheduled.
Right. I'm just wondering, like, what's the procedure? Because this is the second time this has come up, at least that I've noticed.
Yeah, and we have responded, and it was accepted as responded.
No, I meant, not that this specific, I meant the issue of FOIA requests encompassing more than just emails, but other written communications. Like, isn't, shouldn't there be a procedure where at least we're asked to look through our written communications, right? I mean, just, like, oh, here, this is our FOIA request. Board members, if you have anything responsive, please send them to me, you know? So, because I know with the, at least with the last board, there were some people who would use their non-D64 emails, you know? So I know you have access to all the D64 emails, but what if there are some from non-D64 emails that you don't, you know, don't have access to, or if it includes text messages? So shouldn't we be asked, though, for those communications?
Yeah, I mean, legal didn't mention it. We always do every response in connection with legal consultation. So if they believe that we've done it properly, that's the steps we follow.
So every time you comply, you ask, okay. No, that's, so I guess we just have to keep a lookout that if we think we have responsive, you know, communication, then we should just give it to you.
We would ask you if we felt like we needed to do more than what we're doing.
Didn't think that we needed to look through anything?
No, I don't, I don't think board members communicate with the media.
But, yeah.
To notify the media.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the media is notified.
I don't know if they do. I mean, I haven't, but... Yeah.
That a FOIA could implicate board member communications. But you also got to remember that not everything that you guys do is deemed a public.
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying, other public bodies in Park Ridge, they at least get the heads-up email, like, oh, here's a FOIA request. Search through your communications.
And we do the same thing when...
And I'm just saying, I've not received one of those yet. So this is the second time where I thought, you know, potentially, that we might have some. Because, I mean, I didn't do this, but let's say Denise, you know, communicated to, you know, a newspaper, basically. So yes, that would be responsive. But what if she texted or, you know, sent an email from a non-D64 email address? You know, I'm just saying that if that existed, we should at least be asked. But now it sounds like we just have to be on alert and review all the FOIA requests. And if we have something that we think is responsive, then we'll just send it over to Natasha.
Or just ask whether or not it, it's, consult with legal counsel on whether or not they believe. Because, again, when we see a FOIA request that we believe there could be responsive documents from board members, we have a form letter that goes out and tells you guys exactly what we need to do. We've done that in the past year. I'm not handling FOIs. It's not my area.
Yeah, yeah. No, but I'm saying, you don't know it exists. Because let's say, right now, I'm, you know, emailing the Chicago Tribune, then yes, you know, about, you know, whatever this person asked for, then yes, that would be responsive. So you don't know if I am emailing the newspapers, you know, as we're talking, which I'm not.
And I'm not there. I'm just, I'm there.
Yeah, legal counsel has the standards by which they go through this, and we can review it with them and bring up your concerns.
Right. I just want us to, you know, properly respond to these FOIA requests.
Agreed. I, I think because this one was very specific as to notification of rescheduled meeting, which normally no board member would give notification to a newspaper. It goes through our office, so it's really my communication to the newspapers.
So the request we were discussing last time, I mean, I think I have some responsive texts, and I think other board members do, but, you know, nobody ever asked us. So but then you mentioned that the person was satisfied with the response, but
Yes.
that person doesn't know necessarily what she's missing, you know?
And I think we can look back, but I think that one was really specific to emails, which we pulled. Yeah. This one isn't, but I think the one...
And then that one didn't say just emails. So there were two that were similar last time, and one was including, you know, other communications too. But it's just, you know, I brought it up because we just haven't been asked. So, I mean, I guess we will, you know, discuss this at some other time, but...
So I, I guess, I guess I'll...
Yeah, exactly. We were just asked. That's all I'm saying, that board members should be asked, do you have responsive documents? Because like I said, I could be emailing the Tribune, like, right now, and yes, that's definitely responsive, and you wouldn't necessarily know. Or if I used a non-D64 email address, which I wouldn't, but you never know what's going on.
I wasn't going to say it, but yeah.
Gareth, did you have something?
No, this, this is Tom. In the past, when a FOIA was clear as to what was, you know, demanded or asked, I've been asked for communication, to provide certain things that the, that our tech team couldn't access themselves. So I guess it all depends on how the FOIA is, is written and what obligations we have, which determines whether we're going to be asked for information or not. At least that's how I understood it.
Correct.
You know, and I, Carol, I heard you say other Park Ridge bodies are asked for their, you know, say, text messages or that. And I just don't know if other school board, I mean, I would compare school boards to school boards, you know? So if we're looking at, you know, and I don't know that, I haven't looked at that.
Right. But I mean, we all have to follow Illinois FOI, so I mean, that's, that's, we're both...
If in doubt, we can always ask the Public Access Council.
Thanks. And thanks for answering questions, again, from me, about FOIA. Okay, we're, let's see, at A10, new business? Is there any new business? Okay, if there's none, then, let's see, do we have a motion to adjourn the closed meeting? No. I think, let's see if it's in the packet. I think, you know, we have to recite the specific reasons that we're going.
Here, you know, I can, you want me to, and I think then we're going to take a few, just a few minute break. We got to get set up on the closed call. The administration has asked us to go into closed session under 2C2, collective negotiation matters between the district and its employees. Under 2C6, the setting of the price for the sale or lease of property owned by the district. And also 2C10, the placement of individual students in special education programs and others matters relating to individual students. Okay. So is there a motion to go into closed?
I second.
All right. So we have a motion to go into closed and a second. Larry had the motion. Phyllis had the second. So we will now adjourn to close.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
Roll call, yes. Thank you.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Riles? Lubinski, yes. Okay, so moved.
Okay, so it is 8:50 on Thursday, the 21st. The board is going to go into closed session. So the board is back in open session. It's Thursday, April 21st. This is the regular school board meeting for Park Ridge, Niles, School District 64. It is now 9:58 PM. The board was in closed session for about one hour under three items of business. The first one was 2C2, collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees. Also 2C6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of a property owned by the district. And lastly, 2C10, the placement of individual students in special education programs or other matters relating to individual students. Okay, we have one last item on our agenda this evening, and it is to approve a settlement agreement with a student. So do we need any discussion? I don't think we need any more information if someone is ready for the action item.
I move that the Board of Education, Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois, approve the settlement agreement with the parents of students 2021-2022, parentheses, one.
Second.
So Phyllis had the motion, and Carol had the second. Any discussion from the board before we go to vote? Okay, let's do the roll call. Pearl?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Selas?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Lubinski, yes. Riles?
Epstein.
Motion carries. Granted.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Larry had the motion. Carol had the second. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. 10:01 PM on April 22nd, and our meeting is adjourned. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Hope everyone...